Thank you to everybody for being here. And number one is the discussion for the proposed crosswalk project by the junior city council. Who's going to be making this presentation?
Good afternoon. I have two members of our junior city council here with us tonight, but it looks like most of our junior city council came to support them, so they have a presentation and I'm going to let them introduce themselves.
Cheers.
Hi, city councilmen. My name is Joe Solomon and I'm a junior at Farough High School and I'm acting as the creative director on this project.
Hello, councilmen. I am Isabella Tran. I am a senior at Farough High School and I'm the president of Farough Junior City Council. So here we have our Farough Junior City Council camellia crosswalk proposal. So just an introduction of the Farough Junior City Council. We exist as our youth outreach within the city and we serve as the youth's voice. With this crosswalk project, we hope to provide the citizens of Fairhope and students of Coastal Alabama Community College with safe walking space and to showcase the beautification efforts of the city of Fairhope as we did before with our sunset staircase.
So the details of the project. The location of the crosswalk would be Johnson Avenue. Johnson Avenue is located right next to Coastal Alabama Community College. Everyday students and faculty have to cross this street to get back and forth from their classes in vehicles. Here's some inspiration pictures. The design. The design is composed of six rectangles within the crosswalk depicting the blooming of the irrational exuberance camellia. The colors will be achieved by mixing the available asphalt grade paint provided by Public Works. And there is a digital sketch of the crosswalk. Why the camellia? Not only is the camellia flower recognized as the Alabama State Flower, it has a rich history in our town of Fairhope. Bobby Green of Green Nurseries is a South Alabama native who has always loved camellias. Because of his fascination with the native flower, Mr. Green enjoys breeding camellias to produce unique creations. Mr. Green's breeding has earned him acclaim in the flower community, most notably for the hybrid camellia irrational exuberance. Irrational exuberance put Bobby Green and Fairhope on the map amongst the flower community.
So the materials and cost. As we mentioned before, we'll be using asphalt grade paint, including the colors blue, red, white, and yellow, and they will be mixed in order to achieve the colors of the irrational exuberance camellia as shown prior. So after a meeting with Public Works Department, the city offered to provide white and yellow paint as they always have it in stock. Blue and red will be ordered at about forty dollars a gallon with approximately five gallons of blue and two gallons of red, bringing the cost at about three fifty for the paint. Extra materials will include plastic tarp, paintbrushes, gloves, and garbage bags. The paint materials. The specific type of brushes needed will be determined after discussing with Andy, who is a Public Works painter. An estimate budget for both paint supplies and cleanup materials will be a hundred dollars with an estimate total budget at four fifty. Public Works has offered to place down a central of the crosswalk for the junior city council to then fill in. This will be time efficient and minimize mistakes. The roads will be blocked off for one day in a weekend, early March. A projected date is March 12th. And we estimate about four to five hours needed for our ten Farough Junior City Council members to finish painting the crosswalk as well as clean up. A staff painter will be present to supervise. So what we have accomplished so far. As you may remember, we did paint our sunset staircase as well as add a mural within Fairhope Public Park. This month, some of our directors, as I mentioned before, met with Public Works, including the director of Public Works, Richard Johnson, and discussed the details and logistics of the project. So for the timeline, in January this month, we have been planning, preparing, and presenting our project proposal. In February, we will gather the materials, have further meetings with public officials. And in March, with our target date on March 12th, we will set up, begin painting, and finish within a four to five hour timeframe. So that is the end of our presentation. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Council, do you have any questions for either the junior city council or staff on this?
It probably looked great. I'm sorry. Okay.
I just have one. The streets can be closed all day, correct?
Yes, sir.
The only reason I say that is it needs to be closed all day so we don't drag red paint down the highway.
Yes, sir.
When y'all get through, so that'd be great. It'd look good.
So red, blue, yellow, and white creates what color?
Pink.
Thank you. Good job.
Richard, any issues from the city standpoint? I'm not, I'm not as close to it as I might should have been. Any issues that you see?
No, they turned out to be one of the better project teams I worked with on the road. No offense.
Okay, well, look, thank you, thank you all for being here and making the presentation. Thank the rest of y'all for coming to be here to support your guys and your team here. But I don't think we have any more questions. Thank y'all, appreciate it. Look forward to seeing it.
Thank you, council.
You know, I would like to add to that, that this is second or third time that y'all been here and given a presentation. I'm very impressed with the way y'all present your projects. I think they're very well thought out, well done, and well received. So thank you very much.
Thank you so much. That's the goal. Little questions as possible, so all the details are out.
Kevin doesn't compliment many people that come up.
So, council, I think we need to ask, last time when we did the sunset staircase, you passed a resolution authorizing them to do that, so I think we would need to request that you pass a resolution in the next city council meeting.
Right.
If that's the case, then I'll be happy to work with Lisa on that.
Yes, the dollar amount, because it's, not the dollar amount, but because it's on city property. Yeah. Yes, please, please write that resolution, I would say.
Number two, you got some big issues to fill after that presentation, so next we have discussion regarding short-term rental violation. Who's got it? Hunter?
Yes, sir. It's where we have all the fun.
It sounds like a very interesting topic.
It's hard one to follow up with short-term rentals. We are looking at, and I want to be clear before we even start what short-term rentals are. As the council knows, there are some areas of the town, based on their zoning, or by their nature of being within the CBD, are completely allowable to have a short-term rental. There's no issues with those, not suggesting we change anything. But we are seeing an over, a high volume of short-term rentals in residential neighborhoods. And it is a, policing that and by our code enforcement officers is extremely time-consuming. And just seeing kind of the nature of what's happening, a lot of what's happening is investors from out of town are buying single homes based on Zillow or something else that hits a price point and then turn around putting them on VRBO. They're not even local people, so tracking these things down can be. And if y'all know, like, places like VRBO show a location, pictures, but going and there's no address to it. So, I mean, they're literally driving the streets trying to find this house, or sometimes complaints based on neighbors. So the request is, and just want to make sure the council's agreeable with this, as the director, I feel like we need to tighten up on what those, I don't know what that means exactly, don't have the solution, whether that's tightening up business license, or fines, or things like that, but make sure that's still, this is an ordinance adopted in 2007 originally. So just make sure you're on board with, do we want to still prevent those? That is a question that has come up. Do we even want to prevent those in residential areas? There is a segment of our community that would love to see, you know, those be freed up for short-term rentals. I would say that's not the people that are living next to them, but that is at least an option that, you know, we wanted to consider and kind of get some feedback before we invest a lot of time on the punitive side of preventing them.
So just, so I'm clear, and for, I guess, the public's education, what is, what exactly qualifies as a short-term rental?
Sure. Under our definitions, the way we've adopted the ordinance, it's anything that is rented less than thirty days, or more than twelve times in a year. I think it actually states that both ways. So you can have a home and rent it and put it on the website, rent it out, but that, a person has to stay there more than thirty days. So anything less than that term is a short-term rental. So it is a vacation rental, is, you know, what's commonly known. People come in and stay for a couple of days. Under our current structure, that is a hard thing to enforce, because it can be posted on VRBO or similar sites, Facebook, things like that, and listed as thirty-day rentals, but, you know, it's kind of, you can finagle that and, you know, it's, a lot of that's going into, hey, call and we'll, we'll work something out. So it even goes outside of VRBO. And then being a big company, they're not really working with cities to say, here's where we have, it would be great if they just said, here's a listing, here's the addresses of all of our listings. That's not happening. Then we can see which ones are appropriate, which ones are not. But when we find a violation, that's really when the problem starts for us. When we find someone with a legal short-term rental, and a lot of times that does come from a complaint, you know, someone next door says, I got people coming in every weekend, you know, it's, it's not what I moved into this residential neighborhood for. Well, the process there is, we send letters, thirty days go by, we send a certified letter. We, it's escalated till we're finally in our local courts. And a lot of times what will happen is they'll pull the ads down, say, okay, we'll play, play by the rules, you know, but we're five months down the road. They play by the rules and then we get out of the court date and then they post it again and the whole cycle starts over. So it's, or sell it to someone else and the whole cycle starts over. So while I don't know what the solution is yet, before we really invested that time, just kind of wanted to get some thoughts.
What is, do we have any kind of current penalty on the books for this?
Under, I think it's up to five hundred, that's our, that's our general fee schedule. It's up to five hundred dollars a day, but that can take quite some time to get to. So, and that's through the courts. So, you know, looking at, you know, some of the ideas out there are administrative fees. You know, if we have to waste so much time, there's a fee attached to that that doesn't have to go through the courts. Obviously, the courts would be the ultimate if nothing is resolved, but, you know, we can do, do that. There's some fees for, some penalties for advertising even legally, some, what some cities are doing. So there's, you know, you can bump up the thirty-day window. I mean, there's some cities that have went, if it's anything under a year, it's a short-term rental. Others are divining vacation rentals. You know, there's, there's a myriad of options that we can do.
Council president, if I may. How are we getting this information? How do we know the public is upset? Like, what are we, why is this presented to us? Are we getting a mask?
Can I address that question? I want to speak, because, and Lisa's shaking her head, she knows where I'm going with this, is Kevin and I can attest that several years ago, we addressed an ordinance governing short-term rentals, and we had a huge backlash of people that showed up at the council meeting that were opposed to short-term rentals in residential areas. And that was between 2012 and 2016. Do you recall that, Kevin? So, now, I don't know what the sentiment is now, but that's the benchmark that I have that seven, six to eight years ago, I would say, was that the population was opposed to short-term rentals in, in residential neighborhoods, in those areas in which it was not allowed by our code. So anyway, go ahead. Now, he may be getting...
I believe that's still the sentiment, from my, what I see. I can't speak for every, everybody, but...
Be that as it may, what I'm asking, the reason I'm asking that question is because if they're coming to you, are they reporting?
So...
That's, that's really, because you say, I don't know how to catch them, I don't know, I was listening to you.
Right.
So what I'm saying is, if you're receiving that information, how do they know? If they know, they need to help us along with you not manning and going...
So about ten months out of the year, our code enforcement officer...
Jennifer, correct me if I'm wrong.
I know we kind of, we kind of pause going and researching these while we tie up budget end-of-year, you know, issues. But for the most part of the, most of the year, our code enforcement officers are actually monitoring Facebook, Airbnb, and those sorts of things. So they find some that way. Others are neighbor complaints. You know, that's always a struggle, because the neighbor wants to be a good neighbor and not be the bad neighbor that ratted their, you know, next door out. But, I mean, we, it actually comes at us in a variety of ways. Sometimes it's a family member that knows their sibling has a property and renting it out. I mean, it's just a myriad of ways that we get that information, and we're proactively trying to find those as well. So it's...
So, right now, if we find them, whatever our, our limit is, up, up to five hundred a day, we have to go through the court system to collect that? Is that, why, why is it through the court system and not just sort of an administrative fine that's applied to their business license or whatever else they'd have to get for the short-term rental?
This municipal ordinance violation is what it is. And I think it's five hundred per citation is our max.
It is.
It is.
Yeah.
It's not a day.
That's right.
If there's six rentals, you know, in a week, you could find them six times and have six citations, so it's five per citation.
And, and they do have to come through our permitting, correct? So how are they getting past that?
They, they don't.
Okay, that's...
They're not paying. They're, they're, the problem is, is that they're not being, they're not licensed, they're not regulated. And the way to catch them is you set up a Gmail account under John Q. Public and you go in there and you try to book it, and when as soon as you book it, they violate the ordinance. That's how you catch them. You know, you need, I need the, the address to this, and then you, you nail them. It's not that hard. So I think that we should follow the law at such, until such time we change the law. The existing law is, they're not allowed, and if it takes resources to go after them, we should go after them. We also, as the appointing authority to the city judge, if, if we feel like he needs to get tougher, I think we have a right to say, look, we appoint you to uphold these laws and we don't want our employees spending a bunch of time out tracking these people down if we're not going to do anything about it.
Just so I'm clear, we say they're not licensed, is that, we do require people who operate rentals in Fairhope to have a business license.
That is correct.
I know we went through this a couple of years ago and it was a little bit of turmoil. If you have more than one, I think we required you to get a business license, or something to that effect.
We, we should be, anyone, and that's really what we're going to try to do a little better job of, I believe, is making sure every rental has a business license. I believe there was some pushback of if there's a property major that has a business license, the property owner shouldn't, you know...
Right.
That's not, it's not that way in, in a lot of areas. I mean, if you have a condo, the, each entity has a business license to operate, so there's something on record and something that could be pulled if you are in a constant problem child.
But I'm guessing what you're saying, Jack, is these aren't licensed because they're doing...
They're not licensed. If we have a license, we'd know where they work. We'd know who they are.
Yeah. This is, this is, someone's just buying a house and sticking it on VRBO and...
So what's the, what's the fine, not only for violation of a short-term, or short-term rental ordinance, but what's the violation for operating a rental without a business license?
Yeah. And, and that's where looking at the, bumping those up, I mean, there's, there's a lot of these are actually under property management companies, I think we're finding, but they're not reporting, and maybe they need to be reporting which properties they are, they're in, under. Now, we're also exploring, every utility bill comes in, you know, adding, is this a rental? You know, so if somebody's initiating their utilities, are you in a rental or a homeowner? So, so how can we go about some of these? And then if they're rental, we make sure there's a business license for that address.
Yeah, well, I mean, I think my, my position on it would be, it's the law right now. My expectation would be that we continue to enforce it as it's written until a time comes where we decide to change it. I actually had this conversation with a friend of mine recently, who owns a rental house, and he's upset that he can't rent it out as a short-term rental.
Mm-hmm.
And was questioning why that's even part of the law. And I said, well, and I mentioned where he lives, and I said, well, what would you think if three or four of your neighbors put their house in short-term rentals? He said, I'd be furious.
That's, yeah. Most people, when you kind of talk about it, it's...
I mean, everybody's not in my backyard.
Right.
And that's kind of, and so I think, I haven't heard any sentiment of people wanting this to change, and so I wouldn't expect, at least in my opinion, for there to be any reason to change it.
Okay. From the, but, but you're not opposed if we bring some language that tightens that, helps us...
Tightening it up, you're saying.
Are you looking at, I mean, that's what I'm, are you looking at, penalties now aren't strong enough to stop this, so you'd like to up it?
Yes, yep.
Okay, now, if the penalties are up, you know, let's be facetious, it's a million-dollar fine. Is there a court system says, or rule that says you can't find that much money, or is there, is there a limit to what the maximum can be?
Yes. If, under, under those, and exploring, and maybe under the state of Alabama, some, some states are, do allow recouping of administration fees and time that's taken us to research this. So it's kind of how you structure that language, and we'd need to vet that. I mean, we're just, at this point, we've just kind of given a windshield review of other ordinances.
So can we create a process to where we take that away from the judge and bring it back to us? And, and, and we do the fining, so there's not a cap on it? Just, well, we would have to rewrite? I mean, can, is that possible?
I don't know. I think certain things ought to fall under state law, and there's that, there's that catch-all fine.
It's under the police ticket they're getting, right? I mean, it's, it's a...
This ordinance violation, you can write a warrant for every, every rental that they've got. If they're doing, you know, four months, that's, and it's up to five hundred, that's the cap on it. It's not a, it's not a...
But that's our cap. That's our cap.
No, it's a state law.
Five hundred. That's state law. How you gonna bump it up?
I think what Hunter is saying is that, so the process takes six months to even get to that fine, or get them to court. So I think we can tighten some of that up. But the other thing is charging administrative fees, you can charge for staff time, that's where you're going to increase your fines. So that's what he wants to...
That doesn't have to go through the court system.
It does not.
That's something we assess as a city. Yeah. Yeah, and that, well, yeah, that seems to be, I mean, I think, I think we obviously have that avenue to pursue in each of these cases, but also I think what you're talking about, which is some sort of administrative fine, is a simpler way for us to approach these. My other concern is if, if, if there are local rental companies that know what the ordinance is, that are allowing this to happen under their watch...
Lose their licenses.
I feel like there should be some punishment there also. I mean, that's, that's a, that's a willful violation of what they know the law is.
They know better.
And that's, you know...
And, and report, you know, reporting of that where they kind of, that, that does happen in other areas where there's a lot more vacation rentals and they define it that way, where a property management company might have three thousand, actually submit a monthly, here, here's the new people we have under our program. I mean, I was caught one week without a business license and they, they kind of hammered down just across the county.
And I think there are, I mean, I, look, I'm not looking to put any, anybody out of business or overly, you know, burden anybody that's doing this. I mean, you know, if my grandma was to buy a rental and start a little business, I wouldn't want us to try to send her to prison off her first violation. I think there are, I mean, grandma can be tough, she might need to go at some point. But, but, you know, I think everybody, even in discussing this administrative fine, you know, I still think we should give local businesses especially, you know, maybe a warning at first to say, look, we've, we've found out this is going on. If you didn't already know, here's what the law is, this is your warning, next time the fine or the fee will be X.
Yeah. Well, I think what he's saying, yeah, adopt that, put that in your code of ordinances as to what the penalties are, and then you can...
Right.
Yeah. Yeah, it, it's tough. I mean, real estate, training real estate, but every time, real estate companies, because they're the ones selling the houses and, and telling people, you can do this, a lot of times, and, but you go train a group and now then, in, in two years, they have another cycle of agents. It's tough to, to keep that...
Yeah, I mean, I, look, I, you know, and again, you know, we want the law to be upheld, which is what was voted in place and it's what exists, and you don't want to be too burdensome on the public, but at the same time, if they know it and you know they know it and they're violating, and that's a separate issue.
And I, I think that's fair, and I think we can come up and find a solution to accommodate that.
All right. Any other questions, council? Thank you, Hunter.
Thank you.
All right. Next is the Friends' donation of new sound video system to the library. Welcome, ladies.
Thank you.
And gentlemen that are in the audience, they're friends, they have some male friends at the libraries.
Welcome, gentlemen also.
We did bring some in also, but it's just the ladies who are going to be talking to you, okay? My name is Randall Wright, and I have the honor of serving as president of the Friends of the Fairhope Public Library. Our organization is celebrating its sixty-third year as the library's premier volunteer group. And just to let you know, this is our annual membership month.
I want you to know I got my check in the mail. I think I mailed it today.
You have already mailed it, Mr. Burrell. I'm here to thank you.
Maybe I mailed two, I don't know. Lost track.
You have been a member for, you and your wife have been members for many years, and we really appreciate that you renew every year. So we are going to be passing out applications to the other board members. Chris Daly, one of our board members, has our brochure to pass out to you so that you know more about us. And there's an application in there, and we hope that you will become members. It's not a conflict of interest to be a friend of the library.
Thank you.
Moving on, several years ago, the city, along with the Fairhope Film Festival, purchased a wonderful ceiling-mounted digital projector for the Giddens Conference Center at the library. The projector was also connected to the existing sound system. This provided the library with a wonderful opportunity to add free movies to their list of events that they offer the community. The projector was used weekly with book reviews, Consequinity movies, Sweet Home Alabama movies, film festival movies, and other special showings. In November of 2021, the projector died, and it cannot be resuscitated. It has to be replaced. A projector like this starts at about twenty thousand dollars. For the past four years, the Friends have raised enough money to give the library at least sixty thousand dollars each year. That's four hun, two hundred and forty thousand dollars for the last four years, and we are quite proud of that number. But best of all, in 2021, we also planned to end the year with a final check of twenty-four thousand, two hundred dollars. That would have made five years in a row that we've given this, the library sixty thousand dollars, a rather magnificent total of three hundred thousand dollars. So why haven't we given Tamara that final check? Well, we want to use that money along with membership fees from two, 2022 to purchase not just a new projector, but an entire integrated sound system that will run the projector, the speakers, the microphones, and the hearing assist devices. We want to provide the library with a state-of-the-art system that can be, we can all be proud of. And we're here tonight because the library building belongs to the city, and this system will be attached to the walls and closet areas of the Giddens Conference Center, and we want to keep you informed of what's happening at our library, how the Friends are involved in supporting the library, and see if you have any questions or concerns about this purchase.
Oh, well, first off, thank you.
It's our pleasure.
I, I don't personally have any questions, council. Any questions, comments on, on allowing these ladies to install a bunch of awesome equipment in our library?
My comment would be, thank you to the Friends, and it's much appreciated, and, you know, I know that all of us have enjoyed that room for various, the reasons that you mentioned at the outset. I, I recall two or three years ago when you had a series of movies there, it was, I had a lot of fun with that. And I'd also ask all of the city council to support the Friends of the Fairhope Public Library.
Thank you, Mr. Burrell.
And anybody else that's watching this, this proceeding.
We can provide applications to everybody in the audience. We've brought enough.
Tell them where they need to go online.
I just wanted to see if it was okay if I just gave you a brief update on what's happening with the second floor project. We have gotten another estimate from Mot McDonald's office, which is not like the first quote. The first quote was over a million dollars, and this quote is, let me put it in my glasses, is eight hundred and sixty-four thousand, nine hundred and eighty, which is still a lot of money. But a million three just seemed, you know, it was like beating our heads against the But a million three just seemed, you know, it was like beating our heads against the wall. But I'm going to give y'all copies of this and also I'm going to give you again a copy of our second floor reimagined renovation, just to remind you of what we're doing there. That one of the biggest projects of that project is the teen space that will be up to date with technology. Just, it's going to be awesome. Also, we're going to make expansion to our maker space and there'll be an area for the Friends to do all their work so they can get more money to the library and we'll have technical services offices up there also. So this is really going to give us a chance to, because we're moving things from downstairs upstairs to set up a veteran center, which was one, when we came to y'all initially with this project, that was one of the things we had committed to. And so that will be located downstairs instead of upstairs as we first proposed, which I think is a better location. So if it's okay, can I hand these out to y'all? We have a donation that has been given to us approximately $100,000, which we will put towards the, this project going into upstairs. And we're planning on going to the single tax corporation also. So we feel encouraged that they're going to be willing to give some money.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
We are seeing this just to demand. Any questions on the second floor?
Counsel?
So you said this is going to be a teens area? Is that correct? Did I hear that correctly?
Part of it. The largest space of it is a teens area. But there's going to be some offices for technical services who's never had a proper workspace or office space. And then there's going to be an area for the Friends to work their magic. And there's also, what am I leaving? Oh, wait, the maker space, which is already there. It won't be moved, but it'll be enhanced. So we have classes and that kind of thing. Thank y'all so much.
Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. So if you want to make, because I heard councilman, was it you, Councilman Martin said, a website? If you want to make a donation to the Friends of the Fairhope Public Library, you can mail your donations to P O Box 633, Fairhope, Alabama, 36533.
Thank you, Councilman Burrell. All right, so next we have committee updates. Councilman Burrell.
Lot going on with the Airport Authority recently. You've probably seen it in the media. There's some back and forth between the Airport Authority and Continental Motors. More recently, Continental had sent a letter to all of the tenants saying that if the Airport Authority did not drop their lawsuit by January 24th, that they would pretty much all be evicted from their spaces. The Airport Authority countered with a letter saying that if they didn't drop that threat by, I believe it was maybe the 19th, it was last week, that we would terminate the lease with them effective that close of business. I believe that was last Wednesday. They did rescind the threat and negotiations are continuing. So I think that that's a positive step, step in the right direction. So the tenants are not being kicked out and I believe that they gave them until, I don't want to say the date. I don't have it in front of me, March the 15th or March the 31st maybe. But to allow for potential negotiations between Airport Authority and Continental Motors.
Thank you. Any other?
That's all I have for now.
Councilman Martin?
Fairhope Board of Supervisory Board, Matt, I think a lot of more. I think the litigator got out into the media. That's something that they brought to attention. Somehow it got out. I guess they hadn't enough to cover, but it got out and we haven't talked to the guy yet, but hopefully he's going to come and speak to us so we as a council will know exactly about the litigator and where we want to put it. Other than that.
I did see something.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah. So as far as the REG board, it's pretty much status quo right now. We are, had a meeting with all the presidents recently, which I thought was great. All the presidents came and turned in financials and we, and we had a conversation about usage as far as travel ball teams in our REG league. I thought that was a great communication meeting that we had. So it looks like things are walking in the right direction as far as how we deal with this travel versus REG. That's all I have.
All right. Councilman Dan?
Well, the Harbor Board postponed their meeting until February and Personnel Board postponed their meeting until Thursday, this Thursday at 7:00 AM. So if anybody would like to attend, get up early and bring a cup of coffee, you can certainly attend the Personnel Board meeting that's at the mayor's conference room, 7:00 AM, Thursday morning.
Yeah, it sounds like a hard pass. But.
Come on, see us.
The Historic Preservation Committee has a revision to their ordinance that's for us to vote on tonight. The, the change is specifically related to education and facilitating helping people through this process if they choose to go that route. I think it's a good change. And, and Mr. Gober, I see you here. Are you going to, will you be able to speak to this when we get to that issue tonight on the agenda for the Historic Preservation? I'm happy to handle it, but if you'd like to speak on behalf of the Historic Preservation Committee when that comes up on the agenda. Okay. Okay. Perfect. All right. All right, but, but that's all I've got.
Mr. Chairman, can I follow what with, it'd be a committee report of a committee that I'm not on?
Yeah, please.
So I, I talked to Pat Waldrop on the Tree Committee, I believe it was one day last week, and he was just kind of updating me on Noel Park and, you know, just trying to manage, just the management of Noel Park. And there's a management plan, so I won't go into all that. But in the course of the conversation, I brought up to him a concern, and you may not think it's a big concern, but it can, it can be a big concern. And I wanted to just ask him his thoughts. And that is, you know, we have a lot of non-native trees that are, that are growing up all over Fairhope. In particular, camphor trees and also everybody knows it's popcorn trees. There are Chinese, there's a tallow tree, I believe, tallow or fallow. Which one is it? It is tallow, thank you. But if you, if you go along certain stretches of road, and I'll give you a great example. If you turn at the Flower Crock Clock and go north on scenic and you look at our parkland to the right, the camphor trees are just, they're taking over. They're, they're, they multiply by the thousands and these are invasive species. And I think that, you know, we are probably going to have to look at ways to get them under control. And the easiest thing to do is just, you know, you know, maybe in the future, and I'm going to have the Tree Committee come and maybe at a work session and give a presentation on what we should do, just to discourage people from planting them or just to stop the spread of these. Because they, I know in certain areas of town, the, the camphor tree is everywhere. They grow very, very fast. They grow very tall and, and they can kill some of the native species just by blocking the light, in other words. So I think that's something that, it may not seem like a big deal, but it, like a lot of invasive grasses, like Kogan grass and stuff, it gets to be a big deal if it gets too far along. And I think that we ought to, you know, maybe pass an ordinance in the future, trying to somehow mitigate the spread of these, these trees. Anyway, that's it.
Thank you, sir. Any other updates, guys? All right, moving along. We've got department head updates and so I'll, whoever wants to come up, whenever they want to come up, give your update and we'll go ahead and address any agenda items you have.
I'm going to take this time to kind of ask you to help me solve a problem and I'll, I'll tell you, it's sometimes as, as we deal with these things, certain things come to kind of, to press things at home. I will tell you just today that we had an upset citizen who basically suggested that my sanitation supervisor and myself were negligent in our official capacity concerning collection of trash. And we've had a challenge with trash, just so you know, for the last two weeks, we've been operating at one-third capacity as far as trucks. And, and it is, you know, just a reality that we had two trucks go down. One was a hydraulic pump, which is a pretty simple piece of machinery. But with supply chain issues, it, it took for over, it took 14 days for the pump to get here and it was the wrong pump. And so we finally got it reordered. It came in late Friday. That truck joined the force again today at 11:00 AM. So we doubled our capacity. We're at 66%. And the other truck ended up having some issues where it, it threw a bunch of codes. It went into a regen mode and went into a limp mode and would no longer operate. We have finally, hopefully, got it down to a turbo actuator and we're hoping that part will be here by Friday and it's a relatively simple thing. And hopefully that clears the code and the truck will operate. And, you know, you should say, as counsel, Richard, you should have perceived that these trucks' age and condition should have been anticipated. Well, we did and you did as well. I will remind you that in budget year 2021, which is a long time ago, you approved the trash truck and we ordered it within 30 days of that budget passing. We are hoping, we have been promised that that truck's going to be delivered at the end of February. Okay? And as an early pre-budget item, you approved us to preorder a truck that was available earlier in the queue and we're hoping to have that truck here in March. The, the short answer is we anticipated this problem of these trucks getting old. And one of the trucks that was the oldest of the fleet had an engine failure that just to get it back to a running condition was going to be over $20,000. And we rolled it to the fence and said, we'll just make do with the three good trucks that we still have. And we've been, been playing catch-up ever since. So hopefully by the end of March, this problem will resolve itself and there'll be two new trucks and, and we will be back to keeping the best four and wholesaling or auctioning the one. My point being there is that we have moved into a mode that on an auto garbage truck, we are seeing about an 18-month lead time from the time to order to delivery. And we sat down with Kim and the mayor and kind of looking ahead to 2023 budget and saying, here's the problem. If we, if we get approved in 2023 and then you add 18 months to that, you start getting up into a long time in the future. And Kim says, well, I think that would be a worthy thing to discuss at mid-budget year. And it's hard to think that mid-budget year is just four council meetings away. Okay? But that's how fast time has applied. So we reached out to the vendor to get an updated quote, which is attached to that packet they gave you. And so in preparation of coming to you at mid-budget year to talk about getting an order placed. Well, our vendor says, well, that's fine and good. I can give you this quote, but we have just gotten called for our 2023 chassis, meaning that we, we have to have all chassis ordered by the end of February for the 2023 production year. If you, if we don't have an order there, then we're 2024 production year, which then could be also add an 18-month lead time. So here's the problem that we're anticipating. The top of the front page I gave you shows you our current fleet. Our two oldest auto garbage trucks of a very modernized fleet are 2015 models. Okay? In the passing of the FY '22 budget, you included a, a replacement truck, which was ordered within 30 months of the passing of the budget. We anticipate delivery date as potentially as early as January of 2023. If we wait to replace the other 2015 model based upon the, just following the budget year, that means that, that we would hopefully pass the budget in October, order the truck in November. 18 months takes us to May of 2025, which means the truck it's replacing has now reached the 10 years of age. Dale did some industry research and I'm pretty sure the table at the bottom is designed by the truck sellers, but they do classify trucks that are cycling 1,000 or more customers per, per daily cycle as extreme use. That's not uncommon in our business. Where I came from, before I got here, the average truck was servicing 1,000 customers per shift. So that's, that's not, they're designed for that, but that is a pretty heavy, heavy loading. But I will tell you that, that I do believe the industry standard for a frontline auto garbage truck, once you get past seven years of age, you start seeing potential for some very expensive repairs. And that's, that's transmission rebuilds, lower engine rebuilds, those kind of things. And all of a sudden, you're facing, looking at the proposition of spending 25 to $30,000 in a truck that may only be worth at that time 25 to 50,000 in value. So that, it becomes one of those things. So the problem that I'm, I'm needing your help to solve is how do we be proactive to get trucks here when we need them, considering lead times that we're, we're seeing and there's no indication it's going to change? And then you add on the fact that your vendor's saying, if I don't have the chassis, if I'm not in the queue for the chassis by the end of February, then the 2023 year model year is no longer available to me. We're, we're now waiting to get in line for the 2024. And to add complexity to making you scratch your head, most of these auto garbage trucks in the past, we've been doing what we call the municipal lease. It's a financed loan. We do three equal payments and at the end of it, we own it for a dollar outright. Well, the other thing about that is once we take delivery and Kim would initiate that lease, the first payment's not due to 12 months after you take delivery. So we're, we're talking about if we ordered a truck today, theoretically, the budget impact is not until FY 2025 or possibly 2026, which I know that's getting, makes your mind kind of aches. But, but the, the issue that I see at hand is I don't want to be here having the mayor saying, what the heck, Richard, is going on with garbage? Why are we behind? Why are we not getting? And it's, well, we got two trucks down that are, that are kind of past their service life. So that's kind of the, the enigma that we're dealing with. And, you know, the question is, is if we brought to you a resolution to, to go ahead and place the order based upon these conditions in, in the month of February, would that be something you'd be willing to entertain?
Richard, I looked through the numbers and I, and I would absolutely, and you know, I'm probably one of the biggest penny pinchers up here and I would absolutely support it. And I just kind of ran, just, just on the new, the 400 new homes alone in 2021, truck be paid for in, in, in three years. And that's, that's not, I actually slashed the rate a little bit and left a little bit there to pay, pay for labor. So if, if I was asked, I'd say, order it. I'd say, I don't even know if I'd say, wait till February.
Well, this is last.
I guess, I guess the last meeting in January and it's, yeah, wait till February.
I was, Richard, I was going to say that it sounds good to me, but that I was going to turn it over to Jack and let him get after you. But it, it sounds like even Jack thinks this is a good idea. I mean.
This memory we got.
Look, it's, it's, I mean, this is just good thinking and planning ahead. I mean, obviously, you know, we had to pay for it right now. That might be different, but obviously we're looking years down the road before we pay for it. And, you know, with growth the way it is and the trucks that we have and the condition they're in, I mean, it just, it sounds like the smart move and I obviously support it.
And the good news is, council president, there's really only two direct public works, which is a F-150, which is under budget. And my mind just went blank. And we have the lawn mowers back. Let me explain that to you. Okay? You've already passed this once and so we went to order them. John Deere let us know that that model was out of production and they didn't know when it'd be available. The good news is y'all said ore equivalent. So we reached out to Kubota, Toro, other folks that make commercial out front mowers and ran into the same problem. During this process, John Deere called back and said, hey, they've, they've reissued production on the 1550. Great. Well, we got to update the quote. The price has changed and I think it went up 1,700, 1,800 bucks over the, the quote that, that was on the old source well. So has to come back. And I think the first time you passed it, it was a couple thousand over. Now it's about three, almost 4,000 over. So again, the world that we live in. 4,000 over. So, again, the world that we live in. And then, the fire, annual fire truck inspection services are on there. It's a budgeted item. And I think Chief, if he's still here, he can, he can give you better information. But that, we don't really have a choice about that. We've gotta have our trucks certified on an annual basis. So those are my three items.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Got a lot of agenda items. I got some people that need to be talking.
I'll take, I'll be in there.
Thank you.
Good evening, gentlemen.
Evening.
As far as department, as far as our updates, we are working on more substation. We met with Stuart Engineering and the contractor on Friday to discuss a tentative start date, line work, which is now, looks like March 1st, depending on material delivery, on material delivery. My two items tonight, I've got number 19, and I'm requesting for your help with replacing truck 1055, which is our underground service truck. I understand that this is more than what was budgeted. However, since it was, since it is turned out that way, I'm willing to give up a wire trailer to help offset that cost. This truck is set up to what we need. It is not a, a we want, but a need going forward. And then I have item 24, which is something that y'all have voted on before I got here. But it is actually to amend for us to get the 1,000 KVA Armco three-phase pad mount and the 650 KVA pad mounts for the reserve. The one thing I can tell you is, lead times are getting way out, 52 to 136 weeks. So, I need your help to be able to move on and get this going if possible.
I have a request also on 24. If we could add to that, the cost not to exceed 96, you know, 96,940 or an equivalent, simply because if something were to happen with these transformers, that we can purchase an equivalent product not to exceed that $96,000, giving us that flexibility so we don't have to come back. Because what's happening is, we're finding these items and then they're selling.
Yeah, you want me to add, not to exceed 96,000 or an equivalent?
Right, or an equivalent, yes.
Or would it be the purchase of those or equivalent and the, with the cost not to exceed?
Right, not to exceed. The equivalent would need to come first.
Dave, did you look at that new vendor that's courting the city to see if they had them?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. We are talking to them right now. I hope to hear something back from them, hopefully Friday or Monday, from what he told.
Try to see what, you know, just what kinda they can provide and what kinda cost.
Sure.
I think one of the problems we're running into is to, everything we do is on a time deadline because we go from council meeting to council meeting. And people, just like the city, are, have staff out because of COVID or whatever reasons, supply shortages. And, and we, we need, as fast as we're growing, we need the stuff like yesterday. So-
Well, the reason I, yeah, I asked about that one is that they-
The equivalent is important.
They said that they may be able to, you know, keep them and we don't have to pay for them until we need them. Just be a, it'd be a good litmus test.
Sure.
And just looking back at 19, I know you said it was over budget. It's over budget by about 21,000. Do we know why?
Um, the original truck was quoted at 30,000. And this is also to do with supply chain. Trucks are hard to find. And these trucks, this particular truck, I was able to find it. It will work for what we need. It is a diesel. It is four-wheel drive. That is caused, that is what's causing your, some of your, some of your cost right there. But for this application, this is what this truck should have been originally. So-
Does not having the trailer put you, create a hardship for you?
No, no. That was a want and not a need.
Hmm. Hate to hear no's, but I would ask if we make the resolution that we amend the budget to remove the, the trailer then. Would anybody have a problem with that?
Nope.
It is noted on the green sheet as well, that we're, we're-
Removing the other-
Well, we make it part of the motion, I think.
All right.
Anything else?
It's like I got the bulk of the agenda for the council meeting. Shouldn't do that first, cause it's gonna take a while, it looks like.
Anybody hear what that said? Just asking. I'm as close as I can get to you, bro.
Can you come up there?
I'm tired, okay?
So, what you got?
Number 10.
Okay.
Office bill, just reject it. We, it was terrible. We only got two bids and they were, they was, I, I can't even say, they're so far over budget, therefore, they're not even reasonable. So, to reject these and let us rebid it.
Tell me what number again, was that again, Jason?
Number 10.
Oh, 10, I'm sorry.
Yes, sir.
And then number 12 is the most expensive one we have on the one-time purchase, is the VAC truck. Remember us talking during the budget meetings and also during the meetings for the ADM consent order? This truck was brought up multiple times. The, in the past, before I came, our Op had two VAC trucks. The one was an 03 Sterling and the other one is a 18 or a 19. It was here when I came. The 03 has been parked now for about six months. It's, it's, it's well beyond its usefulness. And this is to replace the 03. We took, we called three vendors, the local vendors, and if you, I think it's in your packets, to quote these trucks, VACO, HighVAC, and then the VACTR. The VACO is the truck we presently have. The VACTR is the truck that we are getting, the old truck that we're getting rid of. And the HighVAC, we looked at, I think it was Orange Beach. We went down, looked at their truck. So, those are all three represented locally. The VACTR was the lowest of the three prices and also the, the best of the three trucks. In our opinion, it's the larger debris tank, 15-yard, where the competitors were a 10-yard and a 12-yard. And that's to the size of the tank for the VAC, where we're vacuuming out wet wells for the lift stations. So we needed the most capacity we could get on the frame, that the truck frame would carry. And also 15-yard gallon water tank, that's for the jetter side for jetting sewer lines.
And just looking at the sheet, it looks like it's about 13?
Yeah. Yes, it's over. Yes, sir. It's 13,000.
A little bit over. And I, I mean, I just want that, I think we just gotta be aware of that, you know, as we're moving forward purchases. But, all right, anything else?
13, yeah, 13, no.
Yeah, 13 is over budget as well. That's the lateral launcher. It's a camera system that, that actually is utilized with the existing system with it, we're using now. And it's to actually, it's a go-up services. So, it gives us the opportunity to, to examine services as they come into the main. So right now, we're hiring it done. SSI and Gulf Coast Underground do it. And it's very expensive, but-
It's $260 an hour for the time they leave Mobile, the time they go back to Mobile. It's an all-day deal. Count up how many times you want to move here. $3,000 a day.
Well, the minimum.
That's, yeah, that's the minimum. That's fact.
But it's also, it's $4,980 over budget.
Okay.
And the budget price is what we had. This is the buyer's group. So that was a quote we had at the time we submitted the budget. But that's how much it's went up since then. But they did agree to hold this number. This number is good to the, to the end of February.
Okay. Council, anybody any questions on any of these? All right.
And I guess I'll have 14 as well, for Dewberry. That's what Dewberry did in the engineering reports for, related to the consent order.
Okay.
With not to exceed a $10,000.
Okay.
And a renegotiate at the end of 2023.
What was the RFQ that that's representing again, Jason?
That is the engineering report that we have to present to ADM.
That's what I was asking. Okay. All right. Thank you.
All right.
And 17, it's the damage to the water tank on Farough Avenue, Treatment Plant 1. That was during Sally, the AT&amp;T antenna. And that's the cost of repair. We had it temporarily repaired during this, right, right after the storm. That's the permanent repair.
Did we get any insurance at all with that situation?
We're actually billing AT&amp;T.
Yeah, they're filing. I'm sure they're gonna file. If they, they may file it with their insurance.
My point is, money's coming back.
Yes.
That's my point.
We anticipate reimbursed for all of it, right?
That's what I'm asking.
Yes, sir.
Great job.
And they're not back on the tank. So, that's another positive with that antenna. And number 18 is the, I, I think it was two meetings ago, we discussed it a little bit in the work session, about the dump body on the existing truck that we've already got. And then the return. We also, we took a truck out of the budget. So, I think it was 30,000 that we took out. And this was 22,302. And this is also a state bid. The vendor's in Mobile.
Okay.
And, um, dang, I got one more.
23.
Yeah. 23's the big one. WR Mitchell is our on-call contractor. There is some advantages. You know, we went back and rebid this back several months ago. And nobody would bid on it. These are three-year-old prices and that's the reason that we're going back and asking your help to increase that from the 300 to the 500. And I can go ahead and, and tell you, the reason why, we've got two jobs that we've got to get done in the coming months. And he submitted on that at $14 a foot for laying pipe. And the going rate right now, Mr. Boone will, will be 30 to 40 dollars a foot.
That's why I looked up and he said 14. Is that a misprint?
No, sir. I got it in writing. So that's, so that's why I'm saying, I, we would love to, to take care of this before this bid runs out. This, this bid runs out in June. So it's a three-year contract and it's up in June.
One thing, one thing I do wanna mention is, this is not an increase in that contract. You've already approved it. But the money allocated per year was $250,000. We haven't used that 250 in year one and two. So it's just increasing the amount in year three. So just to make that clear, we're not asking for more money. It's just increasing the third year of the contract. Okay?
And I will get with Kim. We've already talked about this. But because of our, we're very shorthanded. It seems like when we get to hire somebody, somebody else leaves. And our guys are working seven days a week. So there is two things in the budget that we're not gonna buy this year. One is the tapping machine, to be able to do our own taps. We're gonna put that out for bid and hopefully in the, I won't say the next meeting, but the next, maybe in, into February, we'll have some numbers to come back where we'll use a contractor to do that. We're trying to get that off the developer and their contractor from doing taps on our lines, cause it's caused us nothing but trouble. And we're gonna, so we're working on that. So that was a $25,000 item in the budget for us to own our own. But I don't have the manpower to be able to do it. So that will come out. And also a trailer, $7,500. We can't buy the trailer. So, we're gonna keep, do what we got to the next budget year. So that's two things that we'll pull out of the budget that will help offset those, those truck and camera being over budget.
Mr. Chairman, as he's talking, I just, I'm thinking that, you know, we passed the budget and then you put things in or take things out. We have to approve putting them in. But we really should take action to take them out. That's why when we're going through some of these purchases and they're saying we're not gonna purchase this or that, I really think that needs to be, needs to be some kinda formal action. Otherwise, if we don't take it out of the budget, it's still in the budget, right? Does that make sense?
Right. Well, it's not-
I mean, it's, if it's in the budget and we don't take action on the budget, it's still in the budget, right?
Amendment.
That's what we planned to do.
Oh, that'd be great. That's, that's, yeah, that'd be great.
And we've created that, you know, because everything's estimated, but it'd be here-
It can just be pluses and minuses. And it might even help you on your green sheets, you know, going forward, where it'll show, maybe it's something you added, it's, you know, and then it's, and then it's actually in budget and you might even, I don't know how much work it's to do, but it might even be that you wanna end up doing that quarterly. And I think that's a good practice to do that.
We good?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Good evening. First of all, I'd like to just give you some numbers for the calendar year 2021. Fire Department ran 1,197 calls for the total, for the calendar year of 2021. Of those, 30 were structure fires. 13 were brush or grass fires. We ran 10 vehicle fires. We ran 228 EMS calls. We go to first cardiac arrests, anytime the ambulance calls us for a lift assist, things like that. We went to 193 motor vehicle accidents and 723 fire alarm activations, gas leaks, just anything that didn't fit in those other categories. We went to Barnwell 30 times. Went to Daphne 18 times. We went to Fisher River Marlowe seven. Magnolia Springs twice. And then we went to Robertsdale, Silver Hill, and Lillian once each for, for a total of 60 calls outside of the city limits fire jurisdiction area. So, busy year. It was a little slower than 2020, but that was because we didn't have a storm to deal with. But it's still averaging right around 100 calls a month. So, but we're handling it well. We do have item 69, I believe, which is one Richard Johnson brought up with the inspections. Does anybody have any questions about that?
Do not.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Chief, I got, I do have to ask. What, what, what takes you to Lillian from Fairhope? What kinda call takes you to Lillian?
So, we are part of the Ballin County Tanker Task Force. It's a group of, well, it's everybody, all the departments in Ballin County are part of this. It's a group that takes tankers, the engines, different things, and brings a lot of water to a call. I think this one, I think we got canceled before we ever get going. But that's where the, they, they had requested for a major structure fire they had, where they needed a lot of water. A couple of years ago, we ended up on that restaurant fire out there and, out in Lillian as well. So, wherever they call, we'll go if, if we have the, the need.
Major structure fire, didn't have access to water, needed a pump.
Yes, sir.
So is that the same thing with all the other places I heard you talk about? This is the reason, pretty much, when you wanted that?
No, most of those, most of those are close enough that one or two of those were, were Tanker Task Force. But most of those were just going to help with a structure fire or cover their area while they were working something.
Right. And they, they do like-
And they, they do likewise. Daphne and Barnwell also come to most of our structure fires. So, it's, it's definitely mutual, they call it mutual aid.
Right.
Everybody goes to help everybody. So-
Speaking of fires, I know recently we had a family in our community that just had a big fire. Great job on that. My blessings go out to that family. I just wanted to speak upon that, if that family is doing well.
Very good.
Very good.
Thank you, sir.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Hope everybody's doing well. Just real quick, I wanna go over just some numbers that, um, kinda the calls. We've been keeping up with calls the past three months and running them on laptops and running them into the trucks. So the guys have them instead of us having a call by radio or phone like we've always done. So, just the meter set calls and inspection calls, we've had over 80 calls so far this month. We had 76 in November and 104 in December. Of the ones this month, 44 of them has been for new meter sets. 29 of them have been completed. The rest have been inspections, reinspects, generator inspects, that type of thing. Leak calls, we've had about 15 and that's just over the phone calls. That's not somebody personally calling me or calling everybody else or calling the truck. That's just coming through the front office. through the front office, they've all been taken care of. Service calls, for new services on new construction, we've got 25 so far called in this month, and this was as of last week, I believe, right now Jeremy's done called in probably five or 10 more just today. 21 of them that's on the list have not been called in, that's just in January. We have four subdivisions that's in the process right now that we got guys in, one crew is running back and forth from one subdivision to the next to try to keep up. We got eight demos still to be killed on existing homes that are requesting generators, stoves, small things, small appliances, we've got 29 calls in so far this month and 19 we have not looked at, and we're getting probably four or five a day on top of that number. So that just kind of gives you a rundown of what we're looking at, and that brings us back to the meters, which I've had item 25 and 26 I've got on there, and it's like love and marriage, you can't have one without the other, so they're as in one item for the two, for the two lines, if y'all have any questions about them. So the problem we have there is we cannot get materials, the last order we ordered was in '20, and we still cannot get a delivery date on them, so we went out and got with the ANGA group, Alabama Natural Gas Association, Wes Boyett reached out, and we're looking for municipalities that are willing to sell us some of their stock, and we've actually found some, and so that's where we want to get these, as of right now, they're on hand and they're ready, and we are out, I mean, we're, I think we got 17 meters left on hand. On top of that, like this morning, I mentioned, my guys have been going around inactive houses that have gas meters that hadn't been used in a year, we've actually been pulling the meters, painting them, and putting them back in the system, so that's where we're at. I'd be led to answer any questions.
Just so y'all are aware, Terry did place an order in 2020 for meters that we are still waiting on and that we still cannot get an ETA on, so it's not like we didn't place the order, we just can't get them.
So, and that being said, we're probably going to go ahead and place another order through the factory because of the lead times that we're looking at, I mean, we can't run out, and we have between the time of 2020 that we've ordered them, we've been picking up 20 here, 50 here, 100 here, so it's not that we haven't had any, we've just been finding them, now that's out, that's resources, we can't find any except for going to other municipalities.
So Terry, how many do you think we have on back order?
We've ordered, I think there was 460 on that last order.
That's killing us too, because if you can't install them, you can't sell gas.
And these are the small house meters also, you know, and that's not counting our bigger meters, our 425s, our Roots meters, anything bigger for commercial, you know, these are just for the small house meters.
And that's the same thing with the encoders and transmitters, right, you have a hard time getting those as well?
Yes, and that's not too bad of a problem, the lead time's a little bit further, and God forbid, we can put them on later, we hate to, but as long as we can get that meter set, somebody can read that meter, you know, we just, we got to have them.
Very good.
Okay, thank you, Terry.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Terry.
Paige, let me guess, Pyrotechnics.
I do, but before that, I'm going to look ahead to February and let y'all know we are going to have our State of the City, we are going to do that expo style again at the Fairhope Civic Center on February the 10th, 5:30 to 7:30, we invite everybody to come out, we're going to do the kind of interactive all-access, residents can come hear from city leaders, can come hear from city department heads about, you know, their plans for 2022, get a financial report, mayor will do some brief remarks at 6, and we'll be serving a light dinner, so we invite everybody to come out and enjoy that, and then we'll also have, that weekend we'll have Arbor Day on February the 12th, 10 a.m. at Alabama Coastal Community College, so we'll be doing our beautification awards, we'll be doing our tree seedling giveaway, the tree committee's been working really hard on that, so we invite everybody again to come out for that, so. Just a couple announcements, and then yes, I do have 15 on there, we are coming to you in January for our 4th of July fireworks show, like everybody else, I feel like we are coming in over budget, so that number is going to look a lot different from what I quoted y'all when we were getting budget numbers.
That was, that's only for the July the 4th show?
Correct. We have already, y'all had already passed for our New Year's show, which was fantastic, I don't know if any of y'all were downtown for New Year's Eve, they did a great job, we had a huge turnout for that, so. The budget numbers for that was 32,000 back, you know, last summer when we did quote those out, and this is J&amp;M displays, now they are renaming under Pyro Productions, however, that is a turnkey show, same quantity, same show, just a higher, it's coming in a little bit higher, and I'm here to answer any questions, if y'all have any questions on that.
Was there any consideration given to just keeping the budget the same and telling us, give us what we can get for 32,000?
We can do.
Instead of increasing the budget by 25%?
We can do that, and we can go back to Pyro Productions and say, you know, and they have, you know, they were giving us the show that we had last 4th of July, same show, we've, shell count we've been used to given our residents here, so that's why I'm coming at you first, letting you know, if we're used, wanting to give folks the show they're used to, it's going to cost us a little bit more, if we want to come off that shell count a little bit and go back down to what our budgeted amount was, we can absolutely do that, so that's up to y'all.
It's relatively small amount, but if we train these people and they're just, you know, moving the price up 25%, don't push back, they're going to continue to decrease the size of the show and increase the price. Not saying I want to do that, but.
Was the time decreased with the increase in price? No, same exact time, just.
Just the product.
Yeah, and it's on the product side, yeah, they got to get their money back somehow.
If, you know, if that's what y'all want to do, if we want to go back down to that dollar figure that we budgeted, we can absolutely bring y'all back another proposal, if that's what y'all want to do.
I don't.
Me personally, I'm not for that.
Of course not, we'll just spend as much money as we can possibly spend.
I mean, you know.
It's just spend money, it just grows on trees.
You know, it's been a recurring theme, I guess, through this, through this meeting especially, that everything seems to be a little bit more than anticipated, and it seems like in almost all of the cases, it's a product issue and not a city issue, you know, and we kind of got to make the decision as to whether we want what we ordered or we want to get a cheaper replacement, and, you know, I mean, that's a legit discussion to have, in this particular situation, I don't see $8,000 as an obstacle in changing our 4th of July celebration, but that's my personal opinion on it, but I'll obviously entertain.
The only thing, and I don't necessarily disagree, I'm just, I'm just tired of spending money and just immediately approving everything that goes up, but the question would be though, assuming that this is the same size show that we had last year, is it the exact same, exact same show that we had last year?
It is.
Okay, thank you.
Council, anybody else?
Did you say dinner?
I did say dinner, we are going to.
Yes, he did, yes, he did.
I just wanted to make sure.
I caught all that, yes, sir.
I just wanted to make sure, Boone, he has a hard time hearing, so I'm his friend.
Just so y'all know, that's not at the 4th of July fireworks.
Yeah, that is not at the 4th of July, that is at the State of the City address.
The State of the City.
That's correct.
He'll be there.
On the 12th.
It's okay, dinner.
Depends on how many you have, it can make a light difference.
Depends on how many times you go back to the tape.
All right, anybody else, committee updates or agenda items?
Pat White is not here, so I can speak on number 11, that's just to approve the engineer and come back and negotiate and not exceed limit for us to go ahead and start the work to look at the track at Founders, to go ahead and get that, look at some, you know, so we can get some budget figures to see how much we're over budget.
Doesn't matter, we're going to vote on it anyway, right? I mean, it doesn't really matter.
To see how much we're over budget, but this is just the initial process of that.
What are we looking at in sort of end game, you know, when we can get that, I mean, I know that's, we haven't even really started it.
My hope is that we would start construction of that this summer, for it to be ready the next year, but, so it would be ready in '23.
So the spring, is that track season in spring?
It's the spring of '23.
Okay.
So you're saying you'll have to break down the costs for us?
Correct.
And we have, we have.
Tributors.
Yes, we do, single tax and the school board.
The city of Fairhope, excuse my colloquialism, the city of Fairhope, us.
Us.
Fairhope, single tax colony.
Correct.
And then the Baldwin County.
Baldwin County School System, yes.
Mayor, when we build these recreational facilities, there are companies that will do turnkey, which includes the engineering and design work, do you know if that's being looked at as a way to potentially save on professional service costs?
I can't tell you that we have looked at that, but I'm happy to, before we do this, happy to explore that.
You know, when we, when we remodeled Founders Park, just, I know that we hired an engineer and then we had, we spent some money on that, our engineer or architect, and then we, you know, spent the remainder on the playground equipment, but there are, I just note by going through that, there are companies out there that will.
Do the whole plant.
You know, do the work, do the engineering work for you if they, if they build the track.
Okay. Yeah, we can explore that before we move any further.
Yeah.
I think we have a company that we talked about in the rec, department.
We did?
That does that, yeah.
I must have skipped that meeting, I don't know.
That's a package that we have, there's a company that does that kind of.
I'll see if Gail has that as the part of the minutes, and see if she can give you that information.
Okay, cool.
And Mayor, the last thing on the, on the agenda that hadn't been covered is item number 20, which is the purchase of a John Deere Select Spray for the golf, golf.
Correct, Bobby Hall is not here either, and that is, that was budgeted.
Uh-oh, I'm scared of the looks.
And it is under budget.
There we go.
About $1,400, so.
I moved to put that towards fireworks.
All right, all right, well, anybody else got anything before we break us? All right, work session is adjourned, so you guys back at 6 o'clock.